Yeah.
All righty.
She's been great.
Let's call this meeting to order. All righty, if we could have roll call.
Sure. Mr. DiWello.
Present.
Mrs. Hack.
Here.
Mr. Holden.
Present.
Mrs. Koutas.
Here.
Mrs. Sinsky.
Here.
Mr. Manotti.
Here.
Mr. Oppel.
In living color.
Dr. Ritter.
For real.
Dr. Ritter, present. Mrs. Yalish.
Here.
Okay, if we could all please rise and salute our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Okay, at this time I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda when you had something to say.
I do, Mr. Chairman, I would like to add four items to the agenda. They have to do with donations. One is Iroquois Gas Pipeline Operating Company to the Shelton Board of Education Technology Department. The second is the Elizabeth Shelton PTO wants to donate to cover the expenses of a Promethean board and a whiteboard. The Elizabeth Shelton PTO wants to make a donation in the amount of $2,888.88 to cover three 46-inch square outdoor tables for the play area. And the final one is from Sempra Energy Foundation in the amount of $1,000 for Long Hill School.
Motion has been made in seconded, is there any discussion, sensing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, at this time would somebody like to approve the agenda as amended?
So move.
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded, any discussion, sensing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay, approval of minutes. We have minutes attached for our special meetings of January 20th, January 27th, the regular meeting on January 27th, and specials on February 3rd and 12th.
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded to approve the minutes, is there any discussion? Sensing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Presentations and recognition.
Would you like to do the public hearing?
Oh, sorry.
He wants to be out by 7:15 tonight.
That's right. Public hearing, I missed that. We do allow up to five minutes for anybody who would like to address the board, is there anybody who would like to address the board? Hi Deb.
Timing's everything.
See Deb wasn't here and Judd wasn't here.
I know, so you just figured you should keep going.
Deb, are you going to address the board?
Yes, you gotta give her this.
As co-chairman of the Teacher of the Year Committee, we want to thank you for your support for our program, and we would like to give this to you to hang over an appropriate spot in the boardroom. It contains all the names of the Teachers of the Year back from the program inception, Joan Vels, up to and including the two teachers that we had for this year's 2015.
We will definitely take care of it, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And don't trip over the watch.
Maneuver carefully, Bob.
You're in much better color.
All right, would anybody else care to address the board? Would anybody else care to address the board? Would anybody else care to address the board? Sensing not, we'll move on. Presentations and recognition, Chris, if you would.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. So, the Full Day K program is a source of great pride in this community and it required a lot of hard work and a lot of leadership, represented by many of the people that are in this room. Tina Henkel and Victoria White have done a great job at looking over the data that has been provided to them by the principals and the teachers that make this program so successful. And so I thank all of the principals and teachers who have worked so hard to make the program successful. And then I invite true leaders Tina and Victoria to step forward to give a presentation to us, I think you will find this very interesting and inspiring. And there will be a PowerPoint, so you might want to move out of range.
Slightly.
Oh, it's not major. That's all right, we'll move it.
For those of us that suffer from OCD. So, we want to echo Chris's sentiments to all the support that we've gotten over the last short period of time to kind of collect a lot of good feedback from our teachers at the kindergarten level, at the first grade level, as well as analyze the data and look at some current practices in the district in the Full Day K program. Those of you that have been with us for, I think it's almost four years now, right? Since we started the research and the many community presentations. You know, we want to also recognize, you know, Kristen Santilli was part of this process through the research and development and all the community projects that we had, all of our principals, our teachers, and our parents. And we would not be here if it weren't for that, that critical work, and it took a long time, and also the support from the mayor as well. So we're excited to be here to actually present, finally present this Full Day K program in Shelton, and hopefully you'll find it happy. No pun intended. So, we felt that maybe we would take a step back and talk about where we were when we initiated the research around the Full Day K program. We, and it's funny because I look at that clip art and it reminds me of the bus trips that we took to the other districts when we went to go visit some of those Full Day K programs. And I wanted to put the names of all the people on the bus, but I was told that was not appropriate. But maybe next time, maybe next time. So, when we looked at the comparison between a half-day full, a half-day kindergarten program versus a full-day kindergarten program, you know, we first wanted to look at what were the shifts in instructional practice that would lend itself to supporting students in a Full Day K program. And so we wanted to relay the message that there is a difference even from five to 10 years ago in a kindergarten environment, that we no longer should be looking at kindergarten as any other grade one through 12. That they're, that they are standards-based, it's a standards-based curriculum, the accountability is just as high as in any other grade level. There is a stronger emphasis on the ability for students to learn through social activities, and that we need to start moving away from learning in isolation into more group environments. And with a half-day program, that obviously was very difficult. It was, it was a two-hour and 45-minute day, and we just couldn't expect five- and six-year-olds to process any of that within that period of time. So, within a Full Day K program, we would have a stronger foundation for success, long-term gains, and be able to meet the academic, physical, and social-emotional needs that go along with a Full Day K program. We talked about specifically the need for intervention services for students that may not be on grade level when they arrive into kindergarten. So with that time, we were able to provide intervention, more in-depth intervention for literacy and numeracy programs that could sustain the need over time if those students were in intervention services. And then obviously, the, as you'll see, the interaction that students have and through that learning environment, through opportunities such as science, social studies, lunch, recess, which we didn't have in a half-day program. So just a continuation of what we were talking about, you know, when students at that grade level or at that age, five and six-years-old, when they have more opportunities to grow socially, behaviorally, and academically, it's unprecedented. There's, there's no comparison to a half-day to a full-day program. There's less stress, less anxiety with the kids, because there's more time for them to process the information, whether it be academically or socially. You want to add, I ran through those points quickly. We want to get to the fun part, but did you want to add anything to that? So then we looked at, obviously, the last time we presented was the difference in timeframe. And it's, it's pretty evident that a half-day to a full-day program, the number of minutes per day that teachers and students have to interact academically, socially, behaviorally, is more than double. So now what we're going to do is take a look at where are we now? So we are, we have entered our second year of our Full Day Kindergarten program, and many are asking questions, how is it going? How are the kids adapting? How are the teachers adapting to the program? So we're going to take a look at some of the data and end with a nice visual presentation for what we see happening in our district. If we take a look at our kindergarten enrollment, this is just a historical perspective of the enrollment over the last few years. The 15-16 school year, our current year, we registered 329 kindergarten students. Just as a FYI with that number, approximately 20% of those students entered kindergarten having to take the placement test for LASS, the language test that we've talked about in teaching and learning, and you know, with some of you in small conversations. And of that 20%, students entered with an IEP. So either coming out of our preschool program or some of the neighboring pre-K daycare programs within our community. So, last year was the first year in which we really started to dig a little bit deeper and collect that type of data as kindergarten students were registering at our five schools and throughout the summer. And we felt that that was really important as we have been talking about the changes in our student population. The sooner we can get those numbers, the better position it puts us in to make predictions and take a look at personnel and programming so we can meet the needs of our students. But that, you know, approximate 20% is just an important percentage to keep in mind. Currently, our projection right now is 319 for the 16-17 school year. We are still in the process of registering students and taking a look at that. And just as an FYI, the last year of half-day kindergarten was the 2013-14 school year. So we went from 239 within a half-day program to 276, and it's increased, you know, since that first year.
Have you followed any data on the decline at St. Joe's and St. Lawrence kindergarten?
We have, we have not looked at that, but just from experience, when, when people were registering, we know that they have chosen to come to the public school for the Full Day program versus the private schools.
It's cheap.
Yeah. We have also received some inquiry, not just for kindergarten, but some of our other grades at the elementary school for students from Montessori schools. So that, that's been interesting over the last two years, some of them, we've had some focus. There is one in Milford, I don't know if there's one closer than that. So, the next section, we wanted to look at some trend data. We picked two assessments that we administer to all of our kindergarten students. We have other assessments, but these two in particular, for numeracy and for literacy, are correlated directly to longitudinal data over time that impact foundational numeracy and foundational literacy for students as they get older. So that's why we chose the quantity discrimination, missing number for numeracy, and letter naming and phonemic segmentation for literacy.
What is phonemic segmentation?
Coming up, Kate.
Yep.
Patience, patience.
I teach the upper grades, I don't know that one.
So, the early numeracy assessments that we administer to all of our kindergarten students, there are four of them. And one of them is oral counting, and that's pretty self-explanatory. They have to count within a certain period of time in order sequentially, starting with one. They have to identify numbers, so they get a pair of numbers, and then, and they have to identify the numbers as they go along. They have another set of numbers where one is larger than they, than the other, and they have to identify which one is larger. That's the quantity discrimination that we'll look at a little bit more in detail.
Tina, what number are they going up to? You said counting two.
They're up, as, as high as they can go. Within, within a one-minute period of time.
Okay, but when they're doing the, when they're doing the bigger number from a pair, I mean...
Most of them are within 10. They don't go past 10. Yep. The third one, did I get to the third, third one is ident, missing number, where they have a set of three numbers in a series, so number six, seven, eight, and one of the numbers is missing and they have to fill it in. So, the option is to either have the first number be missing, the middle number be missing, or the end number be missing. So if the pattern was six, seven, blank, they have to fill in the blank, or blank, eight, nine, they have to fill in the missing number.
Without counting from one?
Well, however, whatever strategy they have in their head to answer the question, there is a certain period of time, they each get a minute to complete each assessment. And then the scores are tallied up based on numbers correct, or answers correct. So, these screeners, we use to identify students at risk, and we provide these screeners three times a year. And there are targets for kindergarten students that are based on national research, on what those targets should be for fall, winter, spring. And we'll go over some of that data in a minute.
You're going, going to give us the...
Yep, target numbers. Sure. One of the interesting pieces of these early literacy assessments is that there is research, white paper, on the correlation between how well they do on these two assessments that we've picked and SATs. So, the better they do on this, the better they do on the math subtest on SAT. Obviously, SATs are changing now, this is the first implementation of new SAT, but based on the SAT 10, which was last revised in 2002. But that was an interesting piece of data. Next slide. That's you. So, the AIMS Web Test of Early Literacy, the TELAssessments, there are four assessments that we administer to kindergarten students, and the two in which we're taking a look at are on the screen, letter naming as it states and phoneme segmentation, the ability to hear critical sounds in spoken word and language. We also administer a letter sound assessment, as well as a nonsense word fluency assessment. So we're taking a look at the data for these two assessments. So first, we're going to look at numeracy. On the left-hand side is the chart for quantity discrimination, so they have a set of numbers and they have to identify which one is larger. And then the data on the right is the missing number, where you have a pair of three numbers and they have to miss, they have to enter in a value for the blank within the first, middle, or end series. So you'll see that from 2014 to 2015 is that transition year, where we went from half-day kindergarten to full-day kindergarten. And I want to remind you that this is not a cohort, so this is just a different population of students over a course of five years. So we wanted to see what those trends looked like over time. And there is, you know, a significant difference between half-day to full-day. The, you asked about the target number, well, one of the things I wanted to mention too is that this is the first year that we have, we're in the second year of implementation, so we have a full year from winter to winter of assessments that we could look at, that we administer to kindergarten students, that we'll be able to look at in a minute, the cohort group. But, we chose the winter assessment primarily because we're in the winter session right now. But, in the fall, we don't administer every assessment to kindergarten students in the fall. So, the winter assessment to the winter assessment is a full year of growth that we could look at. These particular assessments over time. So that's why we picked the winter administration. Right?
Tina, what do you attribute the difference though? I mean, you know, in 2015, in the winter, they had 78%, and then this, this year it's 77%. And I know that it's a different population, but last year we had a lot of snow days and stuff, and this year we didn't, and yeah. Is it just because of the kids that...
Well, we have, we have had a lot of conversations around that exact question, Kathy, because when you take a look at the next slide for literacy, you're going to see, you're going to see some similarities. However, with the numeracy data, we're not talking about significant percentages that are of concern, but you know, we do attribute it to a few things. First, first would be curriculum. You know, our, our kindergarten curriculum teams, you know, which is headed by, on the ELL side, our reading consultant, and we have a math team that oversees the math, have really been working hard to continually revise the curriculum to make it rigorous and engaging for students as we've transitioned from a half-day to full-day. And, upon inception of the Full Day program, we provided our kindergarten teachers with three full days of professional learning. And it is our belief that some of that takes time with ongoing professional learning, and we have implemented a new writing curriculum across the district so that some of it is just, you know, getting acclimated to the Full Day program for teachers and students, and a little time needs to be had in order for that to happen, so to continue moving forward.
So actually, you've enhanced or modified the curriculum, so it's kind of like learning another, not, not learning a whole new curriculum, but you're learning a newer way to do it.
Right, you know, in essence, you know, we've asked our teachers to learn, you know, half, another half a year. You know, it's, it's completely different pacing for all of our content areas. And, you know, their ability to work with students all day long took on a whole, whole new challenge and a whole new role. In addition to that, the data that we took a look at earlier in terms of the students, the 15, the 2016 numbers you're looking at for winter is that 15-16 enrollment, where I stated approximately 20% of our enrolled kindergarten students are English-language learners and have entered kindergarten with an IEP already in place.
And Vicki, can you imagine that, when we talked about it, if we, if we look at the total number, approximate total number of those kindergartens, about 300?
Uh, 329.
Yeah, and so, of 5%, turns out to be like 16, 17 children, divided among five schools, it could be two or three children per school.
Of increased enrollment as well. So I think there's a few different variables that we've been analyzing and keeping an eye on to see, in fact, as we continue to, to look at this data and trends, you know, if there is something we're missing or that we need to attack to make improvements to.
Vicki, out of the 329 kindergartens, how many have IEPs?
IEP, IEPs and EL students, approximately 20% of that group. It's around 70.
And, and/or.
And/or, yes. Some of them are dual, they qualified as EL and they entered with an IEP. And there's certain schools in the district, one of them primarily being Long Hill, the second one being Booth Hill, in which those populations were significant for their incoming kindergarten. In addition to that across the district, but as well as kindergarten, we've also seen an influx of new to the country, which is, which is, we've talked about that in teaching and learning, which was an unexpected turn.
Do we have any historical data that shows, you know, that this is a bigger impact than we've seen in the previous five or seven years?
We, we have enrollment data that we looked at last year, forgive me for not remembering which committee, but through Dan DeVito's assistance.
Teaching and learning?
It probably was, teaching and learning last year. We looked at the last five years of EL data to look at that enrollment and how significantly it has increased.
Yeah, EL has been going up like on a regular basis.
We can revisit that at teaching and learning.
I think it might be just something to show the whole board, is that if you've got an EL climb and you've got an IEP climb, you know, now you're putting, the IEP particularly on the administrative side, I mean, we've had this kind of ongoing question about what do we do to help relieve some of that? But you've got to, you know, the district is impacting itself at that point.
Tina and Vicki, I just want to ask you, do you have, Chris, maybe you can, we had talked, I think we mentioned possibly doing some kind of kindergarten, I mean, a presentation to the Board of Alderman? And, and, I don't know how much it would help, but possibly, I think that they need to see or, or know of this information. I mean, 20% is a pretty big, it's a significant number. So I think that, you know, when we're requesting, I mean, because we are looking for extra EL, you know, EL teachers, we're looking for, I mean, we're talking special ed and we're looking for help for our administrators.
Budget would be a good time to budget presentation.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Okay. I think it's very important.
You know, I was just confirming with Kristen Santilli I could share some of her numbers. Taking a look at kindergarten registration and that data, over 30% of the kids, 30, 30 students that registered at her school had, ended up being an EL identification and/or special ed, with quite a few of them having both as identification.
The ones currently registered?
Correct. That's the current year that we just analyzed. In addition to that, you know, when I was just confirming with Kristen to share, you know, she also stated, and this was another point that we were talking about earlier, is that a lot of these students that are coming in as potential EL students lack any prior school experience in pre-K series. So, you know, there's also that, that piece of information. Exactly, exactly.
A lot of ketchup.
So here is the literacy for the two AIMS Web assessments that we talked about. And it's under the same premise that Tina explained for math, where the dotted line is where we introduce Full Day Kindergarten. This is a little bit more of a discrepancy between the half-day and the full-day program with literacy, but that tends to stay in trend with previous district data in terms of the two content areas. But as Kathy, to your point earlier, you know, here we are with literacy, 67 to 63, 74 to 69. But when you take a look at above the dotted line in comparison to below, we've made significant gains in these areas. So, a good decision.
And now that I know what phonemic segmentation is.
I told Lorraine, I thought it was some girl's song I heard on the radio.
But no, that's the kind of thing you do more in the classroom, where letter naming, a parent is more likely to do with their kid. And that, that huge jump on the phonemic segmentation shows is that much more time in school for that kind of structure.
Had that altered the, I think you started to say, the curriculum, did you, did it change from 15 to 16?
Yes, yes.
And so is that part of your assumption for the drop?
Yeah.
Is that we raised the bar?
Yes.
Or changed.
Yeah, I mean, implementation is, is major. And again, keeping in mind that we implemented a new writing curriculum this school year. We finished writing curriculum for the district last summer, and then this is our second year with the units of study for writing that we purchased for the district. But to your point, when, in terms of ELA with, with the committee teams that I oversee, we implemented a feedback protocol last year so that everyone's voice is heard, and although they might not be writing curriculum on a curriculum team, that there's an opportunity for their feedback to be documented, and we sit and we converse about that. And we really make it a focus to hear the teachers, because they are on the forefront delivering this instruction. And if we need to move units around, or if we're picking up on whether or not assessments were appropriately created, those adjustments are made, and we provide feedback to the teams as to what adjustments are being made. And if an adjustment is not being made, we do our best to provide the reasons as to why.
Is it beneficial to perhaps, within each school or like community, to perhaps, education's everything, and particularly, I would have to think that, and with a lot of these EL kids, the parents, is educating the parents as to what the expectations are of those, of those children? And would it be beneficial to have a program of some sort, whether it be a morning, or afternoon, or what have you, to call parents in and say, this is the, of course, you know, obviously you have to be able to communicate with them too, if they speak. And I know with the teaching and learning, we, we had that presentation about how many different languages are spoken, to tell them or communicate to them, this is the expectations of what's your child, what we expect of your child. And as a parent, this is what you can possibly do to help them.
Oh, I think they've been doing that all along.
I mean, I'm sure teachers may do that.
Well, not only, but I know that...
I mean, we, we have, we have started, yeah. We have started that, we started, in the first week of September, we, through our teeny-tiny T-Saul department, which consists of Maria Zampano and Christine Butler, we personally invited every registered kindergarten parent to a parent meeting, where we went over a few various community services. We had four or five community partners come here and present, along with our presentation from the district, to, you know, exactly to your point, as some expectations and such.
Because I would think it can be intimidating as a parent if you don't speak the language that well yourself.
Absolutely.
You know, so trying to get over that hurdle to be able to help their child is...
Thank God for the translator in your phone.
Right.
And the five elementary schools have been wonderful collaborators with the T-Saul department. When they're holding literacy nights or STEM nights and such, they invite Maria and Christine. And, you know, for those of you that have gone to some of those nights, you'll see a separate table set up sometimes that have different languages for parent handouts that have suggestions and strategies as to how they could help their kids at home. So, as, you know, this is our, our second year with Maria, our first year with Maria and Christine. As we continue to build that department with your support, and hopefully the town's support, we're only going to be able to reach more families and in turn, you know, those students that are very in need of our support.
And Vicki, I think if I'm, I think, if I can recall it correctly, the, most of the back-to-school nights, Maria was there passing out, remember there was the table?
Yes.
And they did have, I remember seeing, you know, at Bev's School and in Long Hill.
Long Hill, yes. Yep, yep, absolutely. Yep, yep, absolutely.
Both really. I'd like to suggest that sometime in the future, when these, when this kind of data is presented, that, that you compare, for example, the same test to the same test. Because this is really quite misleading, because in the beginning I thought it was all just different students, but it's really more than that, it's different testing. So this is, it's like comparing apples and oranges in a way, isn't it, from two, twenty-fifteen to twenty-sixteen.
Well, all the data on the left-hand side is the same.
It's the same test. It's the same test. There's one test on the left and one test on the right.
Yes, but you were saying between twenty-fifteen and twenty-sixteen, there were two different tests.
No, it's half-day kindergarten below, full-day kindergarten above.
Did you change the curriculum?
Right. But to be honest with you, when changes were made during the half-day program as well.
Yeah.
You know.
But the assessment, administration of the assessment and the assessment probes are the same.
They're the same.
On this data.
So between twenty-fifteen on the right, the phonemic segmentation, twenty-fifteen and twenty-sixteen, that was?
The same assessment.
Phonemic segmentation is the same.
Yes, it's just different.
But a different curriculum.
You're teaching probably the same basic curriculum, but with a new twist or rigor.
But so that twist made a significant difference there.
It might be not. I, I, I won't commit to making a significant difference, but it is a variable, is what, right. It's a variable that we want to recognize. I think, in my opinion, the most significant impact to what you're looking at is the student population. Because we're now at a full day program and we're taking a look at our diverse student population. In an earlier slide, we talked about having a full day program allows us to have kids all day and to really, really reach children all day and deliver the content and the standards. However, it also gives us the opportunity to identify students who are in need in intervention at a much earlier time period than as opposed to the half-day program.
But that I can, that I can see, and I, I see that as the most significant piece of it.
Then the diversity is getting bigger, greater than.
Right, right. But although we can identify them sooner because they're with us for a full day, we have to ensure that we have the programs and personnel to meet the needs of those students.
Vicki? Climate, special populations, T-Sol and special needs are a big chunk of the difference that you see there.
My question piggybacks on what Mark just said. Have you included in your report anything about counselors and your social development?
No, we have not, not, not in tonight's report.
Okay, do you have plans to do so?
In what fashion are you specifically asking?
Well, I'm thinking about what Mark just said, with the IEP and the T-Sol and the population changing so much, and the academic rigor that we have, what about the socialization? These are critical years to develop.
Absolutely.
That, that whole genre of, of socialization. And I'd like to know, we were asked for more counselors, do you see more need at this level? And what kind of need?
We can look at that data. Our schools do collect data based through their PBIS model, their intervention for behavior, positive behavior supports. We could, it's not in this presentation though.
Okay.
One, one other thing, has there been discussion like with the first grade teachers as, with regard to, you know, what's working well and what we need to address? Because I, when I, when I was, just in general conversation, you know, we've gone from a very, from a modified program to a very full intense program.
And I, and I think, not to interrupt, I apologize, but that's where, the next section is talking about the cohort data, where we're looking at the same group of kids over time. And it may answer your question about the impact of first grade.
Well, I'm talking about, I mean, is there, you know, the best things that can happen is the kindergarten and the first grade teachers talk together, first and second grade. I mean, we, well, I don't know. So I'm speaking for myself.
I can, I can.
I mean, I, I do know at some of our buildings, the principals put aside time for those, those transition grades to collaborate and talk. Oftentimes you'll see that happen at the beginning or end of the year, you know, as you're, you're starting a school year and receiving new students and then transition students. But we also do that in ELA through our curriculum teams.
Well, that's what I was gonna.
So there's opportunities where, you know, they're in the same room to vertically look at curriculum and have those conversations.
And you take that feedback.
Absolutely. You know, I mean, we, we not only do it at kindergarten, we have our five, six and our seven, eight in a room working on curriculum for that reason specifically this year, to talk about those transitions and vertical alignment.
Thank you.
So the next series of slides talks about the cohort data. So it's the same group of students that we follow and track over the period of time from when they were in either a half-day program into first grade, or if they were in a full-day K program into first grade. So that's our, our current first grade population. So on the left-hand side, we picked one of the two assessments for numeracy and one of the two assessments for literacy. And we tracked the same, the same group of students on the left-hand side, which is our half-day K. So in two thousand thirteen, that was the last year of our half-day K program, and then when they went to first grade. So what did their, their winter data look like over time? So there was an increase, that was great. However, if you look at the right-hand side, which is the first year of full-day K, which is two thousand fourteen, fifteen, what the incoming assessment scores were, which was at seventy-eight percent, so right, right off the bat, you can see an increase of knowledge right from the full-day K program. And then how it was sustained over that one year once they go into first grade, which is outstanding, truly outstanding.
This is my favorite slide.
Me too, favorite slide, right.
It's not the last slide, literacy?
Anybody?
Oh, you wait.
Yeah. This is a nice slide. But the nicer slide is, okay.
Wow.
What? So you can see on the left-hand side, you have a half-day kindergarten group, and then when they went to first grade, you know, the impact was, wasn't increased, but it wasn't the jump that they needed to kind of make, close that gap regarding the first grade standards. When you go to the, the right-hand side, you have that full-day K program where they're already reaching a higher targeted value for phonemic segmentation. And then when they get to first grade, it's just maintained at such a significant difference between fifty-one to seventy. So our first graders are already outperforming where the previous year was. So that achievement gap is already reduced, just from this one, just from this one itty-bitty assessment. Obviously, we have multiple standardized measures, it's not, we didn't show you everything. But this was obviously a, a great assessment to kind of talk about future, early literacy, foundational skills that they need for future, for reading and so on and so forth, decoding.
It's too bad, I don't see the press here tonight.
It's on TV, right?
I think you should send the copy of this.
Send him the PowerPoint.
PowerPoint to, to the Herald and to the Valley superintendent. With a letter to the superintendent.
It's also going to be presented to the Board of Alderman.
Okay, that's good. Well, we'll take it on the road. Okay, so the, the next series, or the next portion of the, of the presentation talks about our full-day kindergarten program in action. I have to say that I have a newfound respect for all of the movie makers. So bear with us, we did have a little fun with this, but hope you enjoy it.
It has been so great. It has been so fun. It has been a good time. But now, we are all ready. Now we can have a great time. This is a more time. But now, we are all ready.
Wow, wow. Love that slide.
Twenty twenty-eight.
Do I sense that you brought kindergarten teachers with you?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, they were all invited, yes, absolutely. And we couldn't have put all this together without them welcoming us into the room and providing us with some feedback on how things are going. And the principals welcoming us as well. So, kudos to them. They're the ones on the front line, so we appreciate their help as well.
Thank you very much.
So, when did you see any grandchildren? You had to have one in at least every picture. Oh, Miss May, you're proud. Yours is all older now.
Could I ask Dan DeVito to step up to the table? Many times in my budget presentations, I will refer to technology as tools, not toys. So, this is sort of a theme that you'll hear when we meet with various city officials, et cetera. Dan certainly is a proponent of making sure that we have the tools that are necessary. But to make the tools function, you have to have people that can help, people that can be onsite, at the elbow, to help teachers and others use the tools more efficiently and effectively. And so, with that said, we have recently added the position of integrator, that people that can help. And I'd like Dan to speak to it and introduce, as a group, the folks that are here tonight.
Sure. Good evening, everybody. We recently hired some technology integrators stipends from teachers and the technology integrators at the elementary school in Perry Hill. Their role this year is to be able to work with the staff members in their building to provide successful professional development to help teachers integrate technology into the classroom. This is, this helps them align kind of the district's vision of technology along with the building needs for technology. So, this is kind of our first step into really making sure that technology is really entwined with curriculum and the teachers are understanding and comfortable using it. So, I know we have some of the technology integrators here today, so they can just stand up and we can kind of welcome them.
Yeah, we really appreciate the fact that you're stepping forward because it's so important. And I know it's not easy and it takes a lot of time, but.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you, Dan. Any questions from the board? Okay, thank you very much. Thank you all for your help on this.
All righty, communications and board, I'm not aware of any. Superintendent's report and action items.
Just a few things. I was very pleased to be able to share with board members today, but this is for the general public, something that the high school shared with me, the participation rate of Shelton High School students in UConn courses. I know there are other challenging courses that we offer, including AP courses, including courses that we've invented, but the fact that so many students and a higher percentage than other Fairfield County schools are involved in these UConn courses is a very positive reflection of the high school, both for the students and the teachers, because for teachers to teach the UConn courses, they have to be approved by UConn as adjunct professors. And that's not easy. You can't just sign up. You have to go through a whole process. So, the fact that we have teachers at that level and students at that level is very positive. So, I think Dr. Smith and everyone else involved in that process, because it's very important and reflects well on the district. We have two grants that were, that recently came in, and I mention them because they were funded by Pitney Bowes, and they, one is a STEM grant, and it allows us, and these are modest but important grants. One is a NASCAR-related STEM grant for students to be able to work on hands-on projects with people helping them and assisting them and kind of exciting them. And so, that's very important. And the other is support through Pitney Bowes of our mentoring program, the program that we've had for a number of years. I know many of you know well Valerie DeGangi Knight. In any event, she and I have worked, have begun to work closely together. She's a gem, needless to say. But the program is really great, and I met with her and a group of mentors recently to talk about what they're doing and their plans for the future. But even more importantly is that I really appreciate that Tina was able to guide these grants through, and we worked with the Valley Community Foundation and were able to get the money placed there, and they are working with us. So, I've been over there to Derby to meet with their group and Sharon Colcias in particular. And it's the, it's the start of a good relationship, and we look forward to many more grants coming our way to support our kids. I have to say, the event today at Elizabeth Shelton where the author Catherine Applegate Skyped in, where the students had raised money for food, food donations essentially, and raised it at a very high level, and they were one of the top in the United States. But that, to have the author visit by Skype from her home in California was absolutely delightful. And she, you know, as a children's author, you can imagine she's very good at this. But she really was very good, and the kids were absolutely enthralled. And I think you had every child in the school there, which was a wonderful feeling, right? And of course, board member Kathy Yolesch was there as well to support, and I think you'll agree that it was a fun.
It was fabulous. And each kid got to answer, ask a question, which, I mean, it was so well organized, and the children, I mean, they were, they were excellent. They, what, what great behavior, and they were good listeners, even though sometimes it was hard to hear the question, I have to say. That was a really nice experience, and I thank you for the invitation.
Yeah, it was a very life-affirming event, I think we could all agree.
Definitely.
You know, I, there's so much good work that goes on in the district, so I certainly don't want to make a huge, long list of that, but I do want to take the opportunity to single out one of the principals. In no way does it indicate that other principals aren't doing equally interesting and important work, but since this principal is here with his spouse, it's perfect timing for me to do this. The SIS Book Club, what a great program. It's a book club that Ken and his ESL, excuse me, his ELA group of teachers have put together where parents and students are paired and read books together. A particular book is chosen, they read it together, and then come back and we'll have a book club. He has invited me to participate, so I am paired with one young student. I just think it's a really wonderful way to reach out to middle-school age kids and their parents. Oftentimes, parents at that age are saying, "What can I do? You know, my kids are growing older, it's not as easy as when they were first graders or second graders." And this is an example of how that can work. And it was very well attended and very exciting, and, you know, you should be commended and your team should be commended for that. Very well done. On March 8th, at SIS, we are going to be hosting, along with the PTO Alliance, a school food and nutrition summit to talk about issues regarding school lunches, but also good health, healthy eating, the federal laws associated with the Healthy and Hungry Free Kids Act. It'll be an interesting evening with other health-related things there as well. We'll have a school nurse that'll be present to do some BMI work. We'll have possibly some people talking about gardening, and there are a few other things that we're going to have. So, it's about good health and a healthy mindset, but it will focus on school food, and we hope that many members of the public, in addition to board members, are able to attend. That's at 6:30 at SIS in the cafeteria. Recently, we were able to put together a group of PTO members and formed a district-wide PTO Alliance. Very good group of very committed parents, really smart people. I'm really pleased to see that happening, and I think good things will come of it. And finally, just like to thank board member Kathy Yolesch for the article that she contributed to Shelton Life about the new superintendent. And it was just very, very nice to read it, and I appreciate your hard work on it.
And if y'all hang around afterwards, you sign me in.
For a small fee.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Thank you. All righty. For our information, we have information about an approved field trip for the robotics team to Maine for the Pine Tree District Event, which will be April 7th through 9th of 2016. Board action items to be presented for a vote, the consideration of the board to approve Christopher Clouett as an authorized signer along with Dominic Barone of the ED-099 Agreement for Child Nutrition Programs with the Connecticut State Department of Education, Bureau of Health and Nutrition, Family Services, and Adult Education.
Some move, Mr. Chairman?
Second. Okay, is there any discussion? Sensing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Consideration of the board to approve a request from the Shelton High School Boys Volleyball Team to conduct fundraising activities during the 2015-16 school year, and we have information about that.
Some move.
Okay, motion has been made.
Second.
Okay, motion has been made in seconded. Any discussion? Sensing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Consideration of the board to approve a request from Sunnyside School to conduct fundraising activities during the 2015-16 school year, and we have information on that.
Some move, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded. Any discussion?
I just would ask for a couple of clarifications on that. I noticed it says for books and dues, subscriptions, classroom supplies, building supplies. Can we have a little more information on that, Amy?
Sure, yes.
I mean, I just wondered, you know, are we not providing the school with what it needs as far as classroom supplies or?
And is it easier if you step to the microphone so you can be heard?
That way you can be heard on the video.
Could you hear me?
Yes.
What was the line, Kathy, if you don't mind me repeating?
Okay, it said, "Books, subscriptions," there were several, "books, subscriptions, classroom supplies, and building supplies." I'm just wondering if we're not providing the school with enough funds for whatever you need.
Some of those may have been, and I just don't know off the top of my head, I could definitely get that more, more information if you'd like for the next meeting. I could definitely give more detail on that one. And it could have just been something that came up last minute last year. We were doing some books, we ordered additional Dr. Seuss books last year. In the past two years, we had added a classroom, so we had to get another Dr. Seuss book. I believe there was one that was like an additional support for literacy within the classroom, for the classrooms to use, but nothing that.
How about, I mean, is like the classroom supplies and building supplies, does that include like paper or things like that?
No, and I just don't remember off the top of my head because of how it was grouped, but it wasn't, the teachers are given stipends at the beginning of the year, they're given $150 each to order whatever they need for their classrooms. So, those materials are done at the beginning of the school year. So, most of that is if it's come up, if it was with a visit from an author or when we've done our math or STEM nights, that we needed additional materials, that's usually where how it's come out of, because we need it sooner than doing a PO.
Yeah, because, I mean, you know, the PTA provides a lot of good for the, for the kids, and I just want to make sure that we're, you're getting what you need for your school.
No, the PTO is great. They also, I know for Sunnyside, they give an additional $100 per teacher for their supplies that they need. They submit the receipts that way. And then they also, it's very generous, and they also give us additional money for field trips also throughout the year. So, we're trying to really, at Sunnyside, build that into our regular basis of going to field trips per.
But this request is the school, not the PTA.
That is for, that's from the school. Those are school.
This is already in the past, anyway.
Right, that was last year.
It says, it says PTA.
I was curious what building supplies.
Yeah, I do, to be honest.
Why would you have to fund that?
If it was something like for the office, if we needed to get quickly additional folders or something to that extent.
It's coming from the general funds from PTA, not from.
But they might be donating to the school, therefore that disperses it. That's, I know years ago when I was president, we used to donate to schools.
I just wanted to make sure that they're getting what they need for their school.
Yes, the office supplies there were not, that was not from the PTO, but they do do donations, I don't want to overlook their generosity there with giving towards field trips and also to the classroom supplies or whatever the teachers need.
Building supplies is what took our line.
Yeah, and I.
Because building is our business. So, if you're doing building, then we need to know about that.
Building not meaning, not being.
That's what you have down here, building supplies.
Okay, I'm just kind of, I can definitely get clarification beyond that.
Probably the word "chosen" isn't appropriate.
Maybe it wasn't, yes.
Incidental.
That might be the better word to use then. Thank you. Sure.
Any other discussion? Sensing we're ready to vote, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay.
Mark under the three donations?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Or four donations.
Four donations, yes.
I would move that the board accept from the Iroquois Gas Transmission Company the following used computer storage equipment, two APC Netshelter racks, two Dell Server racks, and four APC power bars, the total value is approximately $6,000. I'll do them as a group. That the PTO at Elizabeth Shelton is making a donation of $2,895 to the school to cover one new Promethean board and one white board. That the PTO at Elizabeth Shelton School is donating the amount of $2,888.88 to cover three 46-inch square outdoor tables to be installed in the enclosed front play area. And that Sempra Energy Foundation is providing a donation of $1,000 to Long Hill School.
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded. Is there any discussion? Sensing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Comments by the board chair? Well, our budget request is in, and I think that our budget request is a very frugal one, and the hope is that it will be well received on the city side. Our budget books also look very different than they have in the past, and for that, I need to give tremendous credit to both Dominic Barone and our superintendent, because they looked for ways to provide the information that was traditionally given in a way that was a little clearer and easier for laymen to understand. And my hope is that that will help to show them that the Board of Education is looking to cooperate and do our best to deliver bang for the buck. The reality is, we deliver bang for the buck every year, we just need them to understand it. On the good news front, at the last Board of Alderman meeting, the Board of Alderman passed a motion that accepts responsibility for the solvency of our self-insured medical fund. As a result, we no longer need to have a reserve fund for our medical and dental plans. The city has accepted that liability. And as far as I'm concerned, this is a wonderful thing, because when I had looked into it when we started this, based on what the state would hold an insurance company responsible for, we would need to have about $3 million in a reserve account. And after several years of growing the account, we had gotten it up to $362,000. So, effectively, we no longer need to worry about that. Board members don't need to worry about passing the hat if we have a really bad year for medical, and our staff doesn't need to worry about the solvency of our fund. So, I think that this was the best possible outcome. Frankly, I first talked to Alderman John Englese about this possibility back in May of 2014. And it took some time to happen, but hey, it happened, and that's what's important. We'll move forward. Reports of standing committees, teaching and learning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Teaching and Learning Committee met on Tuesday, February 9th. Our agenda items, Beth Smith, Dr. Smith, reported to us on new courses at Shelton High School for 2016-17. I won't elaborate on them, but 10 new courses for Shelton High School next year will be approved and be part of our program and our curriculum for next year. In addition, there will be an opening of additional elective courses to students in Grade 10. That will be AP Chemistry, AP Environmental Science, Exploration of Current Scientific Topics, AP US History. Programming 1 will now be open to ninth graders. Personal keyboarding, however, will no longer be offered. At the same time, we've had a good relationship with Husetonic Community College. However, Husetonic Community College has stopped Shelton High School articulation agreements for pre-calculus, chemistry, composition, and algebra II. However, Shelton High School will continue to offer Husetonic Community College financial accounting and marketing courses. However, alternative assessments will be offered in late spring. At the same time, our second agenda item, which was wonderfully presented tonight, was the Kindergarten Cohort Performance Data. Both Tina and Vicky, instead of doing it just for the Teaching and Learning Committee, had offered to do the full presentation at our meeting tonight. Ongoing ELL programs in the system. Again, Victoria White did an open presentation to us. She gave us a handout showing the distribution across the district. Currently, 230 students in the district at this point need ELL support and have been identified. Also, Maria Zampano is our district representative for Capel, and she brought back to the district to pilot the Home Language Survey. This is now included in the kindergarten registration packet for the school year. Continuing, the superintendent made a comment that there is a plan to have parent feedback on when and how skill sets like keyboarding and coding should be offered in the continuum in our instructional practices in the district. The Excel Grant, Chris and Vicky are working on acquiring funds through this grant to provide additional T-Sol services for our district and to benefit our students and strengthen teachers' instructional skill sets when working with the ELL students. Other than that, new business, again, a flyer was presented to us for Read Across the Valley. Many people were asked to participate if they'd like, and I believe this is open to all community members, staff, administrators, as well as board members. Our next meeting will be Thursday, March 10th, at 4 o'clock. And our tentative agenda items will be a list of the courses that are presently being taught in the high school, which are new this year. That's the end of my report, sir.
Okay, thank you. Finance committee.
Mr. Chairman, the Finance Committee met immediately before this committee, and we have a recommendation to the full board that an expenditure of $32,650 be approved to cover the board's portion of the Perry Hill Punch List renovation completion. This punch list is a combined city-board activity with parties having both individual and joint responsibilities. The committee further recommends that the full board accept the renovation of the Perry Hill School, and I would like to make these recommendations as a motion.
Second.
Our motion has been made in seconded. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Sensing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Anything further?
That's it.
Okay. Policy committee.
Policy also met on February 9th following Teaching and Learning. We began the process of reviewing policies, and I have the following policy revisions to recommend for approval. They include changes, cleanup language to number 0200, Statement of Education Goals, 0521, Non-Discrimination Policy, Policy Number 4117.3, Reduction in Force, Number 5118.1, Homeless Students, Number 5125, Regarding Health and Medical Records, and Number 6115, Regarding School Ceremonies and Observances, Specifically, the Pledge of Allegiance. As a motion for approval.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion has been made in seconded, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And then, we will meet again March 10th, and we're going to, we've been discussing, juggling the order of ad hoc and policy. So, ad hoc addresses corrections first, and then policy votes on them. So, this process is a little more smooth than I understood. So, that will be March 10th, that, tentatively 5 o'clock. Pending Teaching and Learning, having enough of an agenda. And that's it.
Okay. Ad hoc policy committee.
We presented at the ad hoc the 1,000, 2,000 series to the policy committee, and they will be pleased that are on their agenda to present to the board in the next month. That'll be the next series. And then, we will be also presenting at the next meeting, the 3,000 series. Any changes or?
CES.
I really don't have anything to report to CES. We did not, we don't meet in February. We, although, we will be, I did meet yesterday. We were going through our budget, and we had to formulate the budget yesterday, which will present to the council next Thursday, and that's when our next meeting is.
Okay, fine. Okay, Kate?
I have a few items. You can still register for a day on the Hill, which is next Wednesday, March 2nd, at 8:00. You can still register for a day on the hill, which is next Wednesday, March 2nd at 8:30 a.m. will be in the Bushnell in Hartford. You can register online. The CAPE CAPS Convention, save the date, November 18th and 19th, 2016. And there's a workshop call for proposals and if you're interested in presenting a workshop, then you need to submit a completed proposal by Monday, March 7th, 2016. And you're asked to, you can do all of this online. CAPE has a Student Leadership Award. This award is designed to honor Connecticut high school and middle school students who exhibit exemplary leadership skills and one goes to one male, one female from each high school and middle school. Again, you can register online, you can go online for more information. And just saying, March is Board Member Appreciation Month, just thought I'd tell you that. Is there anything else important after that? I'm not sure.
The CAPE, rather, the National Convention's in April. I know Douglas is going, so am I.
In April, that is mentioned here, so I didn't.
That's the NSBA, the National Convention. And Boston, I'm sure it'll be held.
And then, of course, they mentioned the Lighthouse Project, which we are about to have in Lighthouse, maybe. I'm coming here for March. We also, as a repeat, this is really a repeat of last, in the last couple of months, there's a new board member orientation packet that has 126 pages, look what that's available, will cost you, and that's also online. I think you.
Okay, fine. Okay, I don't believe we have any unfinished business and I don't believe we have any new business. For your information, we have the vacancy report, staff and stipend actions, our enrollment report, and a reminder that Read Across the Valley Day is coming up on April 6th. There's a flyer, and yeah, we've got the flyer.
Can I just ask just one question, Carol? I noticed on the report for personnel, there's obviously, we had two tyrants of custodial. Are, where do we stand in that process to replace?
We need to.
So in other words, a test has to be given.
Right.
Do the City Hall convene that test yet? Have they given you dates as to when that will be convened? How long is this process going to take?
Probably going to do that in town.
Okay.
So that way we can control the test so that it meets.
I'm just curious, because I know it's always been an issue for us, so, as to the length of time it takes.
Yep. Okay. Moving along to highlights.
You always look. Well, as Chris mentioned today at Elizabeth Shelton School, which was fabulous, and we did go to the science fair and every year, I don't know, I don't, I don't think it can get better and then it gets better, so. Kudos to your staff and you, Dr. Smith, we, you know, we, we picked them, though. I want to tell you that we picked, we kind of had the same winner, so it was very impressive and they filled out their paper, did all of them fill out their paperwork for this date?
So, yes.
Good. You'll keep us posted, as I know you do. Thank you.
And I think it was joyous news that we have a National Merit finalist.
Yes.
Yes.
That's awesome.
Excellent.
That's real impressive. Anybody else for highlights? Okay. I'll mention a couple of things. I was also at the science fair and, yeah, incredibly impressive. I'm really thrilled at the programs that we have in this district at SIS and at the high school for the science fairs. And geez, I wish we had them back when I was in school. Robotics, I visited their build session last Saturday and that was incredibly impressive, seeing the mentors, working with the students. They constantly find teachable moments when they're working with the kids. And this year's challenge is going to be a real interesting one. The competitions are always free. There is a competition coming up in a couple of weeks in Waterbury and if anybody has a chance to go, it is a really enjoyable way to spend the day. We've got the upcoming wellness program coming up on March 8th after our Lighthouse program and I think that's going to be a super thing and an opportunity for us to sample the food from the kitchens. I remember back when we had the cafeteria committee, which really about the only good thing about the cafeteria committee meetings, as far as I was concerned, was Linda would always bring terrific food.
That's why I love chairing that committee.
Other than I'd rather eat with my wife, but, but she always brought great food and so we'll have a chance to sample it again on the 8th and Sodexo is being terrific about working with us on that. There is nothing further on our agenda besides adjournment, so we are adjourned and thank you so much.